The March 22nd, 19 -- I mean, 2016 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes.
Madam Mayor, I found two small things that I've already talked about and it's been corrected, so I make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes for the March 22nd, 2016 Regular Commission meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate an Act on Road Closure for Raton Main Street Annual Cinco de Mayo Event. Do you want to address this, Diane?
We have a proposal. We will be having our Cinco de Mayo event on May the 7th, on Saturday, and every year, just, you know, for public safety and easy access to the park at Ripley Park, we ask for the closure of Savage between First and Second Street. And we do have all of the signatures of all the city personnel and heads of departments that are necessary.
Does anyone have any questions?
It needs to be in order, only that we accept the road closure for Raton Main Street Annual Cinco de Mayo Event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the road closure for Raton Main Street's Annual Cinco de Mayo Event. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Deliverate an Act on Annual Event Run for the Wall. Is there someone here that would like to address the commission?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, again, it's that time of year, May 21st, we're having the Run for the Wall group come back through Raton again. We will be fueling up the vehicles once more, and would just like permission to be able to do that event from the City Commission.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that everything is intact, and make a motion for the annual event for the Run for the Wall.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to act on the annual event Run for the Wall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2016-20 Declaring Severe Fire Conditions and Imposing Fire Restrictions in and Around the City of Raton. Chief Matthews?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, of course, once we drafted this and turned it in, we got rain and snow.[215.73][215.73](Laughter) So we'll do this once a week if that's all right with you. Last week, County Fire Marshal Larry Osborne put a countywide ban in for all the non-municipalities, and we do agree with that. It was a fire ban because of dry conditions and high fuel loads. Those same conditions exist within the city, and we do have quite a lot of urban interface with the wildland area. So we, in an effort to keep our citizens and our property safe, we're requesting to put in a fire ban. It's, for the most part, echoing fire laws that are currently on the book. We just want to drive home and publicize them more.
Any questions for Chief Matthews?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-20 Declaring Severe Fire Conditions and Imposing Fire Restrictions in and Around the City of Raton.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Resolution 2016-20 Declaring Severe Fire Conditions and Imposing Fire Restrictions in and Around the City of Raton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deliverate an Act on Intergovernmental Purchase of Bearproof Dumpsters with the Colorado Correctional Industry. Is Jason here? No.
There he is, Mayor.
Mr. Phillips?
Hello, the Madam Mayor, Commission. As a continuation of the bear-proof dumpster project, last time we spoke, I had awarded a contract to AJM Manufacturing for some bear-proof latches, and due to the value of that contract, it wasn't enough to satisfy the match requirement. So, before you tonight is, what we have is an agreement with Game and Fish and Colorado Correctional Industries to purchase dumpsters at a given price that we would like to piggyback against. The item in your packet is the cost of which we would incur, and this would take us up to the required match to purchase that many containers, rather than, we'll retrofit all containers in addition to purchasing these. So this just gets us to the 35 percent match required from Game and Fish. They procured this on their own, and we're not willing to use any other vendors in this process. They have an agreement with CCA, I guess, for all of the dumpster needs that they have. So we're basically just asking for permission tonight to go ahead and do the intergovernmental purchase with Colorado Corrections, piggybacking off of the Game and Fish procurement.
Do you, can you, right off the top of your head, tell me the monetary amount of this entire contract, in other words, our portion plus what Game and Fish?
Our portion plus Game and Fish is in the $500,000 range. Ours is $235,000. I think they're on the hook for enough to make it $507,000 total.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental purchase of the bear-proof dumpsters with the Colorado Correctional Industries.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the bear-proof dumpsters with the Colorado Correctional Industries. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deliverate an Act on an MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton Little League. Is there some here, one here, that would like to address the commission on this?
Hi, I'm Ernest Brown. I'm with the Raton Little League. I'm the vice president this year. We would like to have our continuing relationship with the City of Raton for the use of the facilities for, this year and all continuing years, you know.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm the president for Little League this year, and we have met with the city regarding the rules, regulations, and our responsibilities as far as keeping the maintenance up to date, and we have received our charter, we are up to date on our 501(c)(3), and we are current with our liability insurance.
Madam Commissioner, I would add that this is a longstanding relationship between the City of Raton and a lot of hard-working volunteers that keep Little League alive and very healthy. You know, a lot of Raton kids have come up playing Little League baseball, and this would also cover softball, the softball facilities. We have reviewed this. The MOU that the commission has is typical of the agreement that we have had in past years. The relationship has worked well. I think that we are in line for state tournaments to come to Raton this summer. That tends to bring a lot of visitors to town. They're spending the night, they're using our hotels and restaurants, and bring a lot of activity to town. So, we've had a good relationship with Raton Little League, and I would certainly recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding.
I have one question. You want to use these facilities from April 1st through July 15th, and soccer starts around July 4th. Will you still be using the soccer field?
No, we won't be using the soccer field at that time.
So, by the time soccer starts, you'll be finished with the soccer field?
Yeah, we should be finished with the soccer field by that time.
Okay, if not, we just have to work out at first calling.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, in light of how important Little League is and baseball as a sport in general, I, that's right, I move that we accept this memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. The only thing that I would say was I would like to see the 501(c)(3) status attached plus your proof of insurance.
Okay.
All right.
And one other thing, the dates are 2015.
Oh, they say, yeah, they need to be 2016.
Change those to 2016. Madam Commissioner, we'll correct the 2015 date. We'll get the information on the nonprofit and the insurance. We can send that to you over email, and with your approval, we'll...
It's not necessary for you to provide it to me, as long as it's attached to the document.
All right.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your program. Deliverate an Act on a Conveyance Contract Between BNSF Railroad Company, a Delaware corporation, and the City of Raton. City Manager?
Madam Commissioner, we have had an ongoing conversation with BNSF Railway Company, their office in Fort Worth, Texas, in regard to the rail depot in Raton. And in front of you, you have two documents, a conveyance agreement, and then the next item on the agenda is a premises lease agreement. The combination of both of these documents mean that BNSF is offering to donate the depot to the City of Raton. It is a rather lengthy agreement. It covers utility costs, it covers insurance costs, provisions for things like the potential presence of asbestos or hazardous materials. And generally, the agreement contains provisions that BNSF would continue to occupy and utilize the south end of the building for their operations, and we would also agree that we would enter into a lease with Amtrak for the continued use of the facility by Amtrak. So I bring this to the commission. There is a lot of information contained in the two documents, and I think my recommendation to the commission would be that we, number one, do an inspection, a thorough inspection of the building, that we have some expertise there that can do a potential visual inspection for asbestos-containing materials, and I think we start there. Now, we have asked for the cost of the insurance that's listed in the agreement from the Mexico Self Insurers Fund. They have sent us back a response that they're looking for a potential replacement value of the building, so we're working on that. But we anticipate having that information for the commission next week. I have talked to Greg Heitman at Federal Highway Administration, and if you remember, the funds that are currently funding the project, the multimodal project, originally were intended for renovation of the depot. Now, I would tell the commission that, following the bidding process for the current project, there were two alternatives, and one was for construction of a gazebo. That's shown in the plan that we have brought back to the meeting, the center structure of the development. And the second structure was the bicycle building, which you see on the right middle. But the way the bid worked out, those two structures were not awarded there. They were additive alternates, and they were not awarded. So, I think the outcome of that was, the plan was, well, the instruction of Federal Highway is that to construct the bicycle building, which would now be the first alternative, that part would have to be rebid. So, the consequence of that is, there is project funds remaining, following the construction of the base project, and in talking to Federal Highway Administration yesterday, it seemed like they would be agreeable to then moving those funds back to the depot if the commission chose to enter into this conveyance contract. There would be funding available to at least start some improvements to the depot. So, there's quite a bit to think about there, and I'll stop there and answer any questions that the commission may have.
Fellow Commissioners and Madam Mayor, I have gone over this extensively, and I would like to make a recommendation that we table both agenda items, G and H, until the city makes such a comprehensive inspection of the property, and get a little more in-depth explanation of some of the things in the contract that raised questions with myself. So I would like to see if the city, if the commission would agree with me that we table this until such time that we find out exactly what's happening at the station. That's just my side.
I would concur with that. There were a couple of things. I've talked with the city manager about, one, being really their ability terminated at any time. We could put this money into it, and then they could say, hey, we want it back, which we don't think they would do, but you never know. But there are some things that we really need to consider.
Is it there's some stipulations in there that say that they will reimburse any money spent on it?
There is a stipulation in the agreement that if it was necessitated, BNSF could ask for the building back, and the stipulation is that they would reimburse the city of costs that the city would have in the building. Not grant funds, not federal or state money, but actual cost to the city.
Actual dollars from the...
Correct.
But I think, you know, given its historical significance, I think it would be eligible for, you know, several different types of grants. I'm just guessing on that, but it seems like, I agree we should table it for now and do some more investigating, because it seems like it came up relatively quickly. Is there a time limit to us thinking about this?
You know, we've had a lot of time, significant time.
Especially a long time.
I mean, my involvement's been about a year and a half where they've said, we'll get around to this, and I think BNSF has expressed that they'd like to know the intentions of the commission. There's not really a hard deadline out there, and I think they understand the commission performing some due diligence. On that, certainly, you want to have a thorough inspection of the building, and see what it is that you're agreeing to. So I think that's reasonable. Yeah, there's contact from the railroad asking where you're at on that, but I think it's perfectly reasonable, and depending on the action of the commission, I'll notify BNSF tomorrow of the schedule, where we're at, our request to do the inspection, and whatever conditions that the commission has, information that you would like me to bring to you, we'll meet that. So I think that's agreeable.
How much, exactly how much of the building are they going to retain for their equipment or whatever it is on the south side?
What the agreement says is that they would retain 1,300-plus square feet, and by our look at the building, that's that south wing.
That whole south part, yeah.
That's the skinny part of the building to the south. And I did have the opportunity to go in there today, and they have some equipment stored in there. There's not a lot of active operations, but they are using that section of the building, and they've got some railroad-related equipment in there, signal-related equipment.
I don't know if we can do this, but one of the other conditions I would like to see, and I'd like to know if the attorneys have looked at this contract for us?
There has not been a legal review of the agreement.
I think we need a legal review, and I'd like them to get rid of the Morgan Building.
Mayor, I do believe that the Morgan Building is an Amtrak facility, and I think in the past, the plan was that seasonally, from the months of April to September, there would be a ticketing agent in that facility. I don't know if they still follow that pattern, but I believe that facility was Amtrak, not BNSF. And I would also let you know that Amtrak has planned an improvement project for the building, because they would also be our partner in this, and they would, BNSF has indicated that they would need Amtrak's approval of the documents here, and so we would partner with Amtrak going forward. And I don't see a problem with that. I don't see them withholding that approval. There could be real benefit to Amtrak, but they are planning a project that, to improve accessibility at the depot, and I think that project would take place this summer. And that's really mandated on Amtrak, that they improve that accessibility, so they have responsibilities as well. But back to the temporary building, I believe that's an Amtrak facility.
Okay, I just, whoever owns it, I'd like to see it gone.
Well, I'm not sure if they still follow that procedure of seasonally having a ticket agent there, and I think we can certainly work with Amtrak, and if they're not using that or have a function for it, I think they'd be happy to remove it.
I don't think there's been a ticketing agent there for years.
Right, that's probably true.
I may be incorrect.
I think there was one...
There was still one there last year.
There was one there last year.
There was.
But I'm feeling pretty positive about this. I think it would be, you know, a good thing for us to acquire, but yeah, I think we should, I'd like to see us get that inspection.
It's the oldest and the only one that's still standing of this type of a station on Santa Fe Railroad, so, and it would be beneficial to us to get control of it, but I would like to, like I say, due diligence, and I would still ascertain that I would like to see us table these two items until such time that we've had an inspection of the building and maybe some EPA-looking things and stuff in it to make sure.
Is there anything else?
I'll make that in form of a motion, then?
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to table item number...
G and H.
G and H, until the time that we have had someone legal look at the contract, and also have an inspection of the building. Is that...
That's good.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sibata?
Yes.
Mayor Mads?
Yes, motion passes. Our next item on business is a public hearing discussion for the fiscal year ending '17 budget. Michael Adams, you're going to take the...
Yes, she is.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a pretty preliminary discussion this evening, mainly to seek some feedback from the commission and also the public that may be present as we begin our process to gather all of our information for the fiscal year '17 budget. We did meet with department heads last week, and we've disseminated the worksheets to each of the departments, so by the April 26th meeting, we would have our first draft to present to the commission. And as you know, our interim budget deadline is June 1st, so the second meeting in May, we would need to present the final interim budget to you for approval. So, once again, pretty tight time schedule to get it all done, but I would just ask if there's anything specific that any of the commissioners would like to see in this year's
And I would just add here that the nature of our internal meetings so far has been to review that the revenue side of the budget in the current fiscal year is pretty tight. Now, as we've talked about, grocery receipts tax is usually the largest component of revenue side, and that seems to be fairly close to budget. But the places that we see a problem is, as we've talked about, the small cities distribution, which came to Raton after the legislature had convened, and that's related to the compensating tax in the state of Mexico, is significantly lower than budgeted, and that small cities distribution is pretty unpredictable. So, we're going to face the same dilemma in budgeting for that this year. We're really not sure the mood of the state or the status of the compensating tax a year from now, so we budgeted a pretty conservative, middle-of-the-road number, but it was very low, and it was about $90,000 below what we had budgeted. So that's tough for us to make up in the current fiscal year, and we're facing the same dilemma in the upcoming budget, because if we budget low, and as you know, the majority of the budget goes to salaries and employment-related costs. That could cause jobs, that could cause staffing repercussions, or, you know, a few years ago, you might remember, we talked furloughs. And so, something drastic like that can happen from underestimating revenues. We don't expect, we expect transfers from enterprise funds will be lower than we've seen in the past. Our dividend from liability insurance, that's lower in the current year, will affect us next year. Hard to predict where we're going to wind up a year from now. That's where we sit down with self-insurers, and we review those elements that go into determining that dividend, and we'll be working on that and try to get an analysis for you on that. But the small cities assistance, it's just hard to predict. Grocery receipts tax, a little more predictable, but like we say, we feel pretty good that we're close to being on budget for GRT. So, we've asked city staff to watch our expenses, tighten belts, we've implemented a hiring freeze. We're not going to hire people unless we just, you know, really have to or forced to do that. But we acknowledge that the biggest cost is related to salaries, so that's where we're at. We're going to go into this budget year with that mood in mind. There's not a lot of money to spare. So, as we talk about things you'd like to see in the budget, that's what we've talked about with department heads, is, you know, we're under a pretty tight budget.
So you'll see in your packet, there is a memo that was issued from DFA to all local governments, so a lot of what City Manager Barry is talking about are also things that they're kind of urging caution going into the next budget cycle, and so they have given us some recommendations as far as projecting revenues, also dealing with hiring freezes and things of that nature. So, that is something that they're urging caution statewide. Their memo also does address the various deadlines that we have, which we've gone over before, and the requirements. The only additional requirement this year, there is a questionnaire. It's called a Supplemental Budget Work Plan, and I've provided a copy for you also. So those will need to be part of our interim budget submission. So, it's never fun to work on a budget... So, it's never fun to work on a budget where we don't have a lot of money. So, it's difficult to ask for input, but we can certainly try if there are funds available. We've told department heads to still put together what their equipment needs and things might be, because if there is money, then we'll try to prioritize those based on necessity.
Now, I would point out that we're talking about general fund here. And, you know, some of our other things, we might not have that tightness with. But we're going to look at the budget overall in a pretty conservative manner. I think the other issue that we really speculate on right now is what health insurance does. And so, we'd like to have some communication with those people that we deal with, look at some options. We have been evaluating some options, but that is sort of a wild card that, again, is a big expense.
Anybody else have any questions? Do you have anything else, Michael?
I don't, unless we have anybody in the audience that would like to. It is considered a public hearing. Okay, that's all I have.
I have one comment. Since this year was the first year in the past 12 years, I believe that we've had a clean audit in the city of Raton, RPS, and the water department. I think that you guys follow the route to the budget as you have been doing it. So, I think it's commendable that this happens in the way that you guys are handling it, in my opinion.
Well, and I think the enhancements that we've made to our accounting system as well with the purchase order system really helps us monitor any type of overspending and really control, you know, every department, every line item that we've got. So, I think that's been a good enhancement. So, thank you.
Thank you. City managers report?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I would update you on projects of interest around the community in regard to our multimodal project, which, again, we've put on the board here. The contractor has placed reinforced concrete at the south bus shelter, and we'll start forming up the north bus shelter arches. And those bus shelters are the primary structure at the project. We would anticipate that within about eight weeks, we ought to be substantially complete with the project. And things are going pretty well on the project. We're pretty pleased with the effort and the construction. At the seniors center, I would report that the renovation of that south addition is complete. We did a final inspection of it. I think it looks great, construction very nice. I hope the seniors are happy with the difference.
Very appreciative, very happy with it.
Very nice job, completed some administrative things to complete. And then, a new freezer was installed at senior center also this week. Raton Water Works is requesting bids or preparing to request for bids for their structural improvement to their pre-sedimentation basin. That's a structure located at the Cimarron River diversion. That's west of Cimarron along the river. We have had some foundation-related movement of the building, and this project would correct some structural issues that have occurred with that building. That building is a pre-cast concrete structure. So, that's going to get constructed this summer. Raton Water Works did open bids on their hospital drive lift station. They got one bid that seemed fairly high. They'll discuss that at the water board meeting coming up. I think we have about two weeks of work left with the watershed restoration of the track fire. So, a little bit of touch-up work, as you remember, that was funded with the water trust board funding. So, during April, we'll complete that work, and that's the final work on the watershed restoration. With the exception of the Seagerstrom Creek stream restoration, and that had some separate funding, that's ongoing. I would tell you that that'll be substantially complete in early summer. The majority of that was done prior to the snow we had in November. So, there's some, basically some dirt work to clean up, some seeding, some planting, and that project will also be complete. RPS did take action, and they awarded a bid to begin the removal of the Lortzila generator and engine at our generating plant and demo. So, they have contractor get a favorable bid. That work will start in advance of receipt of the new generation equipment later this summer, early fall. I did go by the South Interchange Project today. The contractor, that's the New Mexico DOT project contractor, has resumed construction activities. They've been shut down during the cold months, but work has resumed out there. So, we'll look for completion of that project during the summer months as well. I would tell you that we have our contractor here, RCI, this week. They do the fixed asset inventory for the city. This is an annual process that's going on now. And of course, that for some time was an issue with our audits. And we did have a good reconciliation of that inventory last year, and so, we're performing that work right now. I would also tell you that we're making preparations for the lodgers tax audit. And as you know, the city collects those lodgers tax receipts. It doesn't go through taxing wherever the state, and so, we have a responsibility to do that audit. That should start during April and be completed during April. We do have an economic development conference scheduled at the convention center on April 21st. And if I could, for a minute, I would like to read the flyer that's on the counter, and the commissioners have this. I think this is a good program. So, this is from Jim Shoemaker, job developer at New Mexico Works, and it states that you're invited and please attend the Colfax County Business Expo and Job Fair from 1:00 to 9:00 PM, 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM on April 21st. The SL Start New Mexico Works Program, along with the City of Raton, the Raton Chamber of Commerce, New Mexico Workforce Connections, Raton Main Street, Grow Raton, and S E R Jobs for Progress, would like to invite you to this exciting event. This year's event will consist of a business and job fair from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. At 6:00 PM, get ready to hear award-winning talk show host, keynote speaker, and workshop moderator Pam Atherton. Pam speaks on topics such as customer satisfaction, business identity, leadership, and dealing with the media. You will not want to miss this dynamic presentation. Businesses in the Raton area will have the opportunity to seek out potential employees and network with other businesses and members of the community. The event is free and open to anyone interested in growing their business, promoting their business, and finding employees. So, this will be a good event. We'd like to invite everyone in the community to please attend. And I think the Pam Atherton presentation is going to be a dynamic presentation to follow up with Dr. Ivan that we had at this time last year. And the intent is that we would grow and develop our economic development conference, potentially into a multiple-day conference with people coming in and potential economic development contacts, so we can showcase Raton as far as economic development. I did attend a meeting of a design group that we have for the Schuler Digital Film Project. There is one submittal still required to go to Economic Development Department, but they have indicated that when we submit this, they're going to send the funds over to the project. And at that point, we're putting together requests for bids to procure and install the digital film equipment. So, that project is moving along. Jason, let's put that picture up. And I would tell you that on March 26, we did activate the emergency shelter at the convention center. And March 26 was the Saturday evening before Easter. So, it was an Easter weekend. We did have some snow. The highways were in very bad shape, closed for a good part of Saturday afternoon and Saturday evening. We did entertain about 350 stranded travelers in the convention center overnight, and that required a lot of manpower. So, I would like to acknowledge that city crews really did an outstanding job of coming out there. Many people spent all night at the convention center, helping the visitors to our town. It was, you know, a tough situation, but we had a lot of help from Raton Police, Raton Fire Department, Raton Public Works, people in the office, everyone in the city just turned out to lend a hand. We also had a great amount of help from the, from Colfax County and their emergency manager. We had a limited number of cots that are provided by Red Cross stored at the convention center. Their emergency manager brought many more cots from Miami to Raton through the, there was about a foot of snow out in his country there, made it to Raton very late at night. Everybody got a cot and all the supplies that they needed. So, we really want to thank Colfax County. Rebecca Hoy stayed all night to try to help people. We had numerous volunteers, just people from the community that came out to help and stayed all night. I've supplied the commission with a couple of thank you notes that we got from some of the travelers. But if you can go back to that picture of the gym, this picture is early in the evening. By the end of the evening, when we got the cots from the emergency manager, there was no more room for cots in that room. And we really had every room in the convention center full. We had downstairs completely full. We had a lot of elderly people that had health conditions. We had people with small children. We had pets. We had it all there that night. And we estimated that 350 people were there, but the fire chief had told me that their count might have been closer to 400 people that spent the night there on March 26. So, I did want to acknowledge everybody that helped. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can I ask a question? Do we still, are we still putting up a chain link fence around that property, like on one of the original cars?
There is a ornamental fence on the railroad side, wrought iron, powder coated variety that isolates the east side from the railroad tracks, but not a chain link that comes to the entire line.
So, there's just this decorated fence as a barrier?
It would be a historic preservation office-approved fence.
Thank you, everyone.
Not very cheap.
On that particular, those drawings, the gazebo is going out? And is there a, is that a, what is that picture right there, the one in the middle on the side?
That's the bike.
Is that the bicycle?
That's the bike.
Yeah, this is the bicycle building that was proposed.
And that's going to be exed at least right now?
I was telling you that with the funding you have left, your choice basically is, you could fund the bicycle building, which could go in the project, be rebid, and we would probably have enough money to build the bicycle building. Or, we could take that money to the depot and do something at the depot with it. And the purpose of a building, the structure, would be visitors that are going from the bus to the train or vice versa. They generally have some time, so they need the basic requirements that travelers need. They need a restroom. They, of course, can use a food option or hot coffee, the Wi-Fi hotspot, a place to sit, you know, those basic things. So, I think that one spot or the other would be the consideration.
Yeah, we could, if we have the money, we can provide those things in the depot, I would think. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I mean, without doing any planning on it, that was the intent, really, of the bicycle building. But just in my review of the depot today, that is the intent of it, and I think we could meet all of those requirements for people.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Jason, question?
Is there any other business to come before this body? Seeing none? Meeting insured.